Why?
And they kind of. Didn't get a fair shake. They did the whole analysis.
Yeah, they're all pulled out somewhere, you know. You know, in every single one, they're painted in really bright colors.
Really?
Unlike the one we have in Scottsville.
Okay.
Aaron, you want to give your impression?
Now, so she joined one. We needed another one. And then we'll technically vote somebody in as chair for the meeting. But I don't think she could chair.
Let's draw from most of them.
We can shut down first.
I have here.
Aaron, are we coming in clear?
Yeah, well, you know, as clear as can be from. Yes, I can hear you.
We're we're at our regular levels of clearness. I'll put it that way.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry about this. I had an emergency I had to take care of. Um, so I hope it's okay to share from a distance.
No, totally understandable. We're just we're just having to kind of wait on it for. I haven't heard from John yet.
Okay.
But I'm sure someone will come up the stairs.
Always love the drum line we get.
Javier, I'm actually gonna turn off my video so that I can look at. Okay.
Good to see you.
I'm John Redd.
Alex.
Nice to meet you again. Feel free to take one of these.
Do I turn?
Right, okay. I'm gonna be right next to you.
How are you doing?
It's fine. Let's figure something else.
Yeah, we got. Yeah, um, we've got a few things, so. Yeah. Do we have Aaron joining us?
Yeah, so Aaron's online right now. The next minute.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Aaron, how's it going?
Good, good to see you. Good to see you, John. Thanks for thanks for making it. Um. I, again, I'm sorry I had to do this remotely. I had an emergency, so I apologized to everyone. Uh, should we go ahead and get started? Or are we waiting on anybody else?
Um, no, I think we have all four here. Boston, all along. Okay. We can start, we can start on time or a minute. We can start right at seven.
Yeah, let's start right now. Um. So. I call to order, uh, the ARB meeting on October fifth at seven P M. Um. Does, sorry, I'm I'm going between documents on my phone and I want to get to our agenda. Does anybody have anything, um, do, can I have an approval of the agenda? Or does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, great. We'll be right along. Um. Okay. Oh, I hear the drumming.
That's too loud in the east, is that I didn't hear it.
Um.
I'll talk to Skid about next semester's program.
That's actually like the the best small town public service thing you can do. Trying to do the meeting while the old drum line is going.
Right, exactly. Well, are there any matters from the public that, um, that, uh, we would like to hear?
So I have an agenda item later in the meeting for Brad Barker. And then our only other person online is the applicant for sign confirmation.
Okay.
We have nobody else in the room.
So, uh, you have Brad Barker as a new business.
Yeah.
Um, do we want to take it as a matter of the public or keep it within new business?
We could move it to the matter of public because most everything other than the, um, sign permit is relatively just staff updates. So we can.
Great.
A little bit more efficient. Brad, if you'd want, he may be in one of these two.
Excellent.
Hey, and how are you doing?
Chair, if you would, if you want me an opportunity to do an introduction, this is me. So I spoke to Brad two months ago. I think, um, we discussed the historic district and he gave me a little bit of history about the past of the ARB. Um, and just kind of touched upon how important historic preservation is. And how sometimes it is a variety of elements in history and sometimes history that we don't pay attention to. So I wanted him to kind of meet our new board, even if it's digitally. And just express a little bit about, uh, what when it's important historic preservation, which includes those who were enslaved in town also.
Yes.
Uh, but if you would give a little bit of insight and just to meet your board also.
Truly, are you all the architectural review?
Yeah. We just had a member actually resign last meeting, so we're on a little short.
Well, I'm Brad Barker and I'm retired, though I'm not quite a default architectural historian. Um, I spent most of my career working in eastern North Carolina. And I'd like to, I'd come to talk to you about one of the, uh, historic buildings in in Scottsville. Between on one side of.
Yeah.
Between on on one side, uh, jobs, eyes for, and on the other side, the uphill side of the now ruined. Uh, once, uh, very variety of things, warehouse, factories, Civil War hospital. Between the two, there's a two-story brick building. Uh, it was built in nineteen eleven. And just behind that building, um, to, uh, left going uphill. Against jobs, uh, there was. A much storied, white, clavbered, framed building, very small, that was a slave house. Uh, I, uh, I've been around for quite a while and I've been fascinated by that particular building. Delved a lot of slave houses. And, um, it seems to me to be stunning the little condition, which is. Very. Uh, but I don't trespass, and so I never. Well, got a first look at it, but a couple of years ago, uh, the property went up the sale. And, uh, I got in touch with the realtor company. And she got me permission to examine the building and keep going in it. And so I did. Most of the clavbered on the exterior of the building kept it. But there were several pieces, uh, were left that were original. And, uh, they were quite interesting. They were beaded, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? There was a molding on the bottom. And that kind of treatment, um, was pretty much reserved for upper upscale buildings. So to find out on slave house was both perplexing and fascinating. The building, uh, as I said, was much story. It was clavbered with pretty much new clavbered within the last fifty years. Um, and it had added on the front a shallow front porch. But it was when I went in that, um, my breath was kind of taken away. Because the interior of this building. Had not been touched. It was as if the inhabitants had just moved out. It had a wide board floor and it had similarly wide board floors. And the walls had early nails nailed in them, uh, in places where the inhabitants had home clothes, utensils, et cetera. It had a subtle tuning and two rooms on the other side and two doors that served part of the room. Uh, the interior had one door so you could communicate between these two rooms. And each room had a tiny little fireplace. If if it was twenty-eight inches wide, uh, it it was about twenty-eight inches wide and and maybe. Yeah, uh, there was one in each room. And you could still see where embers had burned the floorboards around the fireplace. The 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 building stayed on the market for a while and a couple of months after I examined it, it was purchased. And the people who purchased it, uh, tried to establish, some of you, maybe all of you will remember. Um, except Javier, I think may not remember this. They tried to establish a business called something like Country Store.
There for interest.
There for a country store, yes. Um. So they established that business and about two months after they did, I was driving up, uh, Valley Street one day and I saw a man taking the clavber off the slave house. I stopped and I asked, what are you doing? Um. And, uh, they said that the silk. And it was a big silk. I had examined it. It was about eight by ten, as you would expect in a building of this period. They said the silk was rotten and needed to be replaced. Well, I didn't say anything, but I've been an architectural historian a long time. And you don't need to take all the clavber off the building to replace the bottom ember. A building that size is about easiest part to jack up and replace silk. But another funny thing was. I had examined a lot of that silk. That silk was good. There was even a place where, uh, a, uh, a new piece had been history here. Um, a couple of days later, I was driving up Valley Street again. And, uh, the entire structure was disassembled and in a pile on the side of the brick house. And I stopped again and I asked, um. What was the need to do that? And they said, um, that they were gonna put it back up. And again, I was a little dubious because this was a building that was put together in a fashion that's called Morrison Tenner. Do you know what that is? Okay, um, it's pegged Morrison Tenner. It's easy enough to take apart, but it takes real skill to put it back together. Um, well, I was driving up Valley Street. Another couple of days later, and that pile was gone. And there were then building, uh, a new little building on the footprint of the slave house. Out of modern lumberyard materials. So. I guess. Oh, let me, let me just add that that particular slave house is one was one out of four that survived in Scottsville. This is, uh, almost astonishing. Uh, slave houses are rare as hen's teeth. Um, most of them that survived, uh, are survived in terrible condition. That one survived in excellent condition. Uh. As a measure of its importance, twenty years ago, when, uh, the historic nomination for the Historic District of the town was done. The the architectural historian who did it singled out that particular slave house, uh, for a little more extensive discussion than much greater buildings around town. And that's because, I think, that she knew how rare it was. That she knew how rare it was for a slave house to survive anywhere but particularly in an urban context. And considerably, this one probably was connected with the, uh, the now ruined factory. So it was not only an urban context, but it was a commercial context. The other slave houses that survived in town are domestic. Um, and, uh. There is, uh, a study that's been going on for some years now. Uh, it's a survey of an inventory of slave houses in Virginia. Um. They're all scholars and they have calculated that in eighteen sixty, there were, uh, approximately a hundred thousand slave dwellings in Virginia. They calculated that from how many slaves there were and how many blocks there would be. Be needed to house them. They calculate now that perhaps, perhaps two hundred survived in Virginia. So to have had four in one, in Little Scottville, and four that were in superb condition. Um, was extraordinary. Unfortunately, now twenty-five percent of of those slave dwellings are gone. What I, what I'd like to leave for you on the table is, um, how did that happen? How how did that building slip through the cracks? And, um, how, how can that be prevented in the future? Uh, every single antipallan building on this historic survey is present. I understand that there is valuable conflict between private property and public good. But, um, I think, uh, maybe it's time to think about that, that, that question. Um, when does the public good, uh, when should the public good, uh, take some precedence? Thank you. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you obviously for inviting me.
That's actually not.
Thank you.
When did you say that that was constructed? I had jumped out.
Um. From what I saw, I don't know. I think probably the eighteen thirties. The factory was constructed in the eighteen thirties and I, I. I think probably at that time and quite a bit later, from, from the uphill side of the factory. Of that end, all the way through Doug's. I think probably that was an area that that was owned by that factory, uh, that warehouse. They would have needed that to bring in wagons for horses. They would have needed that room and that's exactly where they would have put this, put a slave house. It's put about, they were always put about, um, you could take that script. They could take that literally and I think you can take a book, um, but it was put about and. It may be that there would have been more slave houses in that, in that area. I'm perplexed by this building a little bit. The fireplaces are still more. I don't.
Are they still there? Did they still around?
They left the children. They left the children, yeah. And I knocked on the door of, there's a person who is registered now. The same people own it, who destroyed it, uh, the same people own the property. Um, I knocked on the door. There's a woman there now who's a, uh, a therapeutic, uh, massage. Person. And I think she used to. Do use of me, so I really didn't get to see what they may have said. Uh, this little building, another extraordinary feature was it had, uh, it had metal pieces. It had shimmying around. Very unusual for a slave house to have that kind of treatment. When you put that together with beading on the side of one wonder. Um, why was, and and also with the structure itself, which was superbly connected, the build. Uh, slave houses were usually shuttered. Um. So I'm perplexed by all of that. I'm perplexed by. Why they, why they built such a. Uh, what? Good building, uh, for a slave. They did not usually do that. The structures usually weren't good. They were, they weren't loaded. There was no fireplace to handle. This time, well, it was dreadful, but it was, uh, very well made. Um.
So I can give some staff background. So really, I'm relatively fresh. Brad knows that. We talked over the phone and our, our ARB. Is relatively fresh also. Um, so this occurred during a previous ARB term, previous town administrator. Started to, uh, talk with the mayor and what he recollected from back then was that. There was conflict between the zoning administrator and then with with the site. So it seemed that staff was aware that that was the historic site. Uh, I'm still digging through paperwork to see if there was any documentation or history back. Because I know that on the side, there was also changes around water that would have needed to be from the county. Which is something separate from what's staff would do here with ARB and what, uh, the board would do.
So the town, Javier, you said was aware of that they were taking this building down?
I have only heard through hearsay now, but I'm trying to find actual proof on that.
Do we have any documentation on the building? If we lived there or, you know, who was the original owner or any information?
No.
Building, so I should.
No, when, when the, it not in twenty, uh, oh, two, I think it was. When the, uh, big historian, architectural historian, just, uh, to create this, or just, you know, the department of the period. Uh, she mentioned nothing, uh, about, uh, who may have lived there. She did mention, uh, the names of a number of slaves, but they, she couldn't. Put a point of what they did, where they lived. Um, in the eighteen thirties, I can't tell you, though, that, uh, they should be near. Part of the town's workforce was enslaved. And and also there were fairly many three block of people in town at that time. I don't think this belonged to a three block person, uh, because it would have been on property of the factory. And, um, I don't think a three block. Structure would would have been allowed on that floor.
And who really had a survival.
Maybe, maybe we couldn't.
Well, the reason I ask, that'd be interesting to get to, I don't know what our, how extensive our records are in the town.
To answer that, just discussing it with you guys, maybe you have before gone up to the county to look at the records. And you could start with the name there and start seeing if there's a trail. But, uh, that would be me being an amateur historian. I'm more than curious about it.
I think, forgive me, I think you're barking up the wrong tree here. I think. It would take an awful lot of research to try and tap down. Uh, what slaves may have worked in that factory, what slaves may have lived in that house. I think it might, you might find that possible. I've done a lot, a lot of research. There's an echo which must help. It's very, very difficult. One thing, slaves, you know, before the eighteen seventy centuries were listed under their owner, they were all listed father for sale. They had no last name. Um, uh, so there's a problem right there. I think, you know, where she's looking is how it's out. And and to prevent it happening here. I I I've lived here, there, and a lot of places and some towns and cities. Um, have laws and regulations, uh, so that no one can touch a building in the historic district. Without going to you personally. If they do, uh, they can be severely harmed. And I think that's what needs to happen here or you're gonna lose. You're gonna lose more and more and more. It's gonna get nearer and further. The other slave houses, the rock are in good condition. They're up on, uh. What's the street? On Valley Street, um.
Harrison, Harrison.
Yeah, they're up on Harrison Street. They're well maintained. They're well painted. Uh, so I don't think anybody's wanting to, uh, destroy them anytime, anytime soon. There is another slave house on Valley Street. I've never seen it. Uh, I read about it in in the nomination. Uh, and if you want, I, I don't see a point, but I can give you the address. Uh, it's the other, uh, it's the other location.
Well, I can't speak for the, you know, Aaron's the the lead here, but I'm gonna kind of go on. What I've seen in my limited time being here is that this board has been pretty diligent as far as, I can't speak for the board then. But us now, it's due for that. We strike a good balance between preservation and also property owners. You know, ability to work on stuff that they have and want to work with them. Again, very small window I'm looking in here, but people seem very willing to come to us, very willing to talk to us and ask us, you know, what's okay, what's not okay. Because we have done. I think it would be a good gesture for the town to possibly reach out to anyone who did have involvement in that, not. I just ask for a background, I'm looking at the stories of like.
I don't know if this reached out at all. I don't know.
And that's why I would like to, you know, whoever the administrator was at the time, kind of, if they're willing to talk about it, get a, get a story at least about, hey. What happened here? We can then base our future operations on kind of.
I consider myself important. With this house, I came, I went to the town. And.
Hello?
Hey, welcome here.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
Oh, good. Okay, sorry. I I'm sorry to interrupt. I was, I was talking and then I I, nobody could hear anything, so. Um, I just, I I I'd just like to take a step back. Um. And thank you, uh, Mr. Barker for coming in. I really appreciate your commitment to, uh, the African-American and Black history of Scottsville. And I think it's incredibly important for us to remember these structures as a part of that history and it's. You know, um, in the time that I've been on the board, it's, I I think it's been three or four years, um. But it it's something that has, uh, lacked, I think, in our conversations. We do our best with the information that we have, but we don't necessarily always have all the information. Um, and so your, your deep knowledge as an architectural historian is incredibly appreciated. And I'm so thankful that you've come today. I guess. I I I think the root of your question is. How can this be prevented in the future? And how did this happen in the first place? And I I I think it's because we don't have. Not all of the, uh, structures in Scottsville are well documented and such is this structure. I I I doubt, knowing the history of the, the ARB, um, board. I I I think if they would have known the, um, the value of this structure, they wouldn't have let this happen. And so I guess that, that, what that brings to mind is. We, we really need somebody like you who, who has that information. To be able to document it so that we have a resource for, um, uh, for putting systems in play, well, a resource for, uh, finding that information, but then therefore putting systems in place to prevent this in the future. And I guess my question would be to you, I, it it sounds like you have a lot of experience and. John, I, you may have a lot of experience in this too. You know, how do we thoroughly document these structures so that they? Their value is present in our, in our written and our visual history. Um. And therefore cultural history, but also what sort of systems can we put them to place that? That other smaller communities, other smaller, um. You know, the pri- quite frankly, uh, primarily white communities have, have put into place as precedents. And so, so ultimately, my questions to you are. How do we document these structures thoroughly enough so that we have that information? And then what kind of systems have you seen in other small towns that have been successful?
Couple of questions. Two questions. Other small towns have had this. Other small towns have had this, um, in different, different facets, um. What is, one system I've seen is, is they had a computer program. So that anytime uh a, and, and the program had, um. The data on every single structure that was listed uh in the historic nomination. And anytime that a property sold that was uh in the, in that category. Uh, those people uh had to be informed. That they had a historic property, and in, in this instance, they could not touch it. They could not touch it without first discovering it with the historic review, um. I've seen some towns that have passed laws that are um absolutely uh. Very, very strong laws, if you, if you did something like this, you could have an enormous fine. Maybe some jail time, uh, because the building was considered so important to the community, whether. If you know, large, and that was American community, or another part of the south, I mean, there are other. Uh, if you want, if you want an architectural historian to do the kind of research that it takes. To actually learn of a fair amount, a good amount of data. About how the building was used, the longer you used it, um, it's gonna cost you money. I'm, I'm sorry to tell you, but architectural historians don't do this for free. Uh, as far as slave buildings, generally, it's hard. Uh, as I, as I mentioned earlier, there is a, a survey, uh, sponsored, I believe by the state. And private entities to uh, to review, find, review. And study every single African-American dwelling in the state of Virginia. So, that might not cost you, you know, that might not cost you such a pretty penny, because there are many. But she needs to look what, look at what's out there. I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, I'm talking to a voice.
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Okay, my, my name is Erin Root, I'm the chair of the ARB, and I apologize, I'm not in person, I had an emergency this evening.
Hello, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Pleasure. One suggestion I could give is, as Alex said, I'll do some investigating. On what happened in the past and report back to you guys, that might illuminate, and then the only thing I can think of is that in a month or two. When we discuss inventory again, we can discuss about best practices or any agreements we can make. Um, because you guys have been diligent too, and I'm hitting the ground running, and I, I, I'd be more than happy to help out with. Uh, making sure we preserve any.
Well, would, would they have to get a demolition permit?
That's what I'm suspicious about, and that would be through Alamo.
They would have needed also a building program for the new building, but by that time, the slave houses are ready.
So. My concern is that that was all escaping, not only the town of Scottsville, it's the county of Alamo.
Yeah.
Uh, which is more alarmical, so that ends up being two different entities. Uh, because you're exactly right.
Well, the building, the apartment, each to be aware, I've been a guy of death, and they are, I'm in charge of the pair, aware of the. Port, so it's a small building like that.
I know, they are aware.
And then I could do follow up with community development up there, and see if there's some approach we could have with. With them, to be, make them aware, they should know where our report district is, and anything in that should flag.
Right, that would be.
It should come back to me as a, as our zoning administrator, but, yeah.
Javier.
Yes.
I think the other thing is, and, and you cut out a little bit, so maybe you said this, but. Uh, what Mr. Barker is, is recommending is we, uh. Instead of hiring a historian, maybe we piggyback off of existing uh architectural history. Uh, research that already, that already has been done in Virginia, and I, um. Mr. Barker, maybe you can tell us what those resources are, so that Javier can look into those and see if they include Scottsville.
Resources for what, I'm sorry.
For uh architectural buildings. Uh, that go back as far as eighteen thirties, cause you had recommended. That, that potentially, a, a architectural historian has already. Done this work in the state of Virginia, is that correct?
Uh, well, the, the, the architectural historian who wrote the uh. Who wrote the application uh for the Nashville Historic District in Scottsville. She studied the town, and she studied these, this little building. But in a nomination like this, it's under pressure, it's down and dirty, it's done quickly. And uh, under the individual buildings, there is almost nothing. Styles is identified, period is identified, maybe there's a name of a family associated with the buildings. But very little more, and I'm afraid to tell you that if you get more, um, to squeeze that line. You need a lot of work, um, and. Uh, you do have one resource at the University of Virginia, it's got a whole architectural history department. Uh, and uh, maybe some of those students might wanna come down here and visit her. And do some research for you, that's one thing I can bet.
I can reach out to UVA on Slanting Fellas in Architecture. You've had a long extended issue with UVA for getting, so, I think we have a pretty solid chance of doing that.
Good.
We upgraded all the time when I was on Johnson, so.
I, I, I'm gonna be useful in a lot of days.
As, as soon as you're talking, money council's gonna.
Yeah.
I would say, I would do it for you, but listen, I'm, I'm an old guy. I'm proud of being a liberty, and I, I don't think I have it in me anymore, I'm sorry.
Well, we're gonna get her.
If I did, I had, I had a lot of fun, I do, free, but I don't, I don't think I have it in me anymore.
We would love to, uh, love to have you do it, this is very knowledgeable.
Uh, we take a lot of research in Charlotte. Um, that's where you have to be, that's where the records are, a lot of them.
What about the state historic supply, um, would. Would they be in a sort of a grant director, please?
They would advise you on what grants, and what grants you could get, yes, yes. And there's a grant question, I'll be, uh, in a, probably in school of architecture, I don't know anymore. I went there so long ago, uh, we could draw that, see if they could draw you up. And you're telling me about a immense amount of research, if you, I mean, if you wanna do every building, it's all about. And then historic district, that's, that's, that's research, just to do the remaining three slave houses. You're talking a lot of work, because as I said, to research. Architectural block histories is, is, is very difficult.
Might be worth uh checking out any antsy papers, I'm not sure, I know you've developed documentation.
There are banks on the reference, you know, slaves were property. Um, and there would be matching in those, and there are other references as well.
And at the very least, I think I could talk to Brad after the meeting and double check those three properties on Harrison. And include that even as a note when we talk about inventory again. Uh, because we should probably have some enforcement power just that we have at hand now. Two on here.
And one behind, uh, uh, another eighteen thirties building that was. Working on it for a very long time, on Valley Street, one behind it. I have not seen it, because it's kind of, but it's in a nomination for this story. It could have it torn down, it's still there.
Couldn't we do like a small little, uh, give you a backdoor or something, you know, and that realtors are. Distribute it somehow, um, so that homeowners are aware, or purchasers are aware. Because you're gonna do that research, and really adding value to that property.
True is.
To some people, and I think a lot of people who live in Scottville are.
As I said, the ones on Harrison Street are very well maintained, obviously people don't.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they know the slavery. They're probably full of jokes. That's one way to make, you know, that's one way to teach, yeah.
I'm curious, I've worked on a lot of the warehouse systems in town here, and. You see a house, it's like late eighteen hundred, like in the nineteen hundreds. And you're, you start getting into the walls and stuff like that, usually what I'll find is that there's a smaller structure within. That is, that looks like, it was two three that I've worked on down. East Main, that you see is significantly older.
Which one?
There's a house with blue siding and a red roof, not sure the address of it, and, or the date of it, but there is a. Little bit bigger than, you know. Twelve by twelve, but it's built into, is now the house, and what we got is the wall, I mean, it was. Different saw cuts on the wood, and significant abrasions, I'm not, not quite being curious, if there is kind of a hidden gem. In the town somewhere historically, where not only is it, this word meaningful for what it is, but you know, it's something attached to it.
Seen a couple like that. Where there's, you know, it started out in a small house, and built around it. Sometimes built around it so extensively, it's, you know, it's like a hidden vault, or something. There's, I haven't seen that very much.
Let's say, uh.
There are three very old houses on East Main. If you were, not one of these, lots of mayor's factories. Told him, uh, has been gutted inside, unfortunately. Four, now there's the cabin, which has been gutted inside, then there's two little houses.
Have you ever, uh, looked at, they call it the dollhouse, a little white one?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like he's starting to take care of it, I think that was our struggle.
That was our last year.
Uh, yeah, he was one of the, he was kind of a true.
It's a little touchy, I think.
Yeah, he does, I think ten more or less before, you know. I know it was a big fight, because he's put a plastic plate on it, it's too low. I think that's why America, but he, he's upstairs, we say.
Erin?
Yes. Yeah, I was just gonna say, so you're gonna work with Mr. Barker to, uh, just call out those. Two other slave quarters and, uh, confirm that we have those uh on the inventory, is that correct, Javier?
Yeah, I think that's an easy first step.
Okay, great, wonderful. Mr. Barker, we really appreciate your time and energy and communication about this matter.
You are very welcome.
I'll talk to you again, Mr.
Broke my heart when that slave house went down, and that's why I didn't come sooner. I'll tell you the truth, I was so angry, I was so angry, and just so correct. I just wanted to stay with it. The fact, when I came here to spoke to the old manager, I was pounding my fist on the. On the counter, which scared me myself, and I said to myself, I can't do that again. Well, I've found my shit on it.
Well, I'm, I'm thankful you came, um, you came at all, uh, even if it is, you know. Even if it is later, I appreciate it.
You will.
Yeah.
Brad, I'll reach out to you, don't worry about that, thank you.
Javier. About Savannah County, but, uh, one of the biggest sources of income was raising themselves as slaves.
There are two slave houses, I know all eight of them, they were both about to fall down.
Over there. In historic that's here. I'll, I'll reach out. Thank you, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and move on to old business, uh, what's the update on the Dollar General landscape?
Hey, Erin.
Yeah.
Could I make a point, maybe we let, uh, we jump ahead of ten to sign permit, uh. One sixty two since they are online with us.
Oh, a matter from the public, sorry, it's so hard to hear with the drumming in the background, what, can you?
Sure, yeah, we, we have someone online with us, uh, looking.
Okay, great.
Towards sign permit, one sixty two Scottville Center. I was hoping we can do that, so we don't, uh, tie them up unnecessarily.
Well, that would be, that would be skipping ahead on the agenda, um.
Yeah.
So typically. Typically, we take matters from the public, and then we go into old business, and then we go into new business. Um, do you wanna, do you wanna make a motion that we change the agenda?
Yeah.
For today?
Uh, I moved to move, uh, for a, under new business sign permit to, uh. Its own separate, we'll call it three A, uh, ahead of old business.
Okay, all in favor, or does anybody second that?
I do.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and talk about sign permit for one sixty two Scottsville Center.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jenkins of Fast Signs. Uh, reached out to me recently, he's working on a sign for, um. El Casador, if I remember off the top of my head, I can't remember which state. But the Mexican restaurant that is soon to come into our Scottsville Shopping Center, yeah. So he filled out a sign permit, I discussed with him about, um, sign, uh, sign dimensions of the commercial district. Um, also in the entrance corridor, um, and he included a mockup that's in your agenda. Uh, size dimensions, color, uh, also how it will be, uh. Attached to the wall, but from what I look at it from staff review, it fits within our dimensions. I included our table also for commercial district signs, so it fits within some, uh, maximum, uh. Or within the maximum area that you're allowed on a wall mount, on a wall mounted, uh, commercial sign. So.
Great, thank you Javier, does it have any lighting?
Uh. Mr. Jenkins, if you can hear us, does it have lighting? I can't remember discussing.
Yeah, can, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, clear.
All right, awesome, thank you guys for having me. Um, yeah, it, it is illuminated, there are illuminated channel letters and a, uh, small capsule below, which is all measured on the mockup.
So my clerk pointed out, there is indications of LEDs on, uh, the, uh, printout, on the front of printout.
Great, so I think, it, it, so just to remind everyone that our purview is not. Um, the aesthetics of the sign, it's to, as Javier said, um. To make sure it's within this, the required square footage of the sign. And to make sure, to confirm that the, the lighting is, um, appropriate, and. Um, Javier, thanks for doing the work on measuring the square footage, that's wonderful. I, I, we're, we're, I don't know where we are with lighting. It seems as though this would be illuminated in a very similar way to other signs within. Um, with, within the strip and, um. So this actually goes back to what we were talking about last meeting, the measurements of. The Kelvins and the Lumens and, um, et cetera. And making sure that we have a kind of structure for what we measure. Um, signs and, uh, lights. Um, against or to, um. So, I, I guess I would ask Josh and Javier. Did you find out any specific information on those measurements of lighting?
No, so I don't have, uh, that, um. Yeah, so out of our zoning code, the most important thing I've noticed, especially in commercial districts. Is that we do not allow whole deep lights, uh, permanent, not permanent, but, uh, whatever. Steady, steady. Uh, are, are a limiting factor. Uh, or are. Uh, I think what we were looking to, Josh and I, was more about streetlights. And we, I cannot think later on that, that's a little bit limiting, but, uh, it's a little bit different context than, uh, this sign, I would say.
Right. And so I guess I, I guess I would ask. How do we? How do we take the information? Um. That the drawings are giving us and just confirm that the lighting is not beyond what, what we would expect. Do we have that within our guidelines?
So I've actually looked through and. In the guidelines, there is no reference to the amount of light that it puts on. Other than polluting into other, uh. Territories, not properties.
Okay.
So, it, we don't have anything of the sense of, you know, when you see it. Um, which would probably be, you know, our main guideline until we can have. Cause frankly, I have no scientific knowledge on the measurement of light and.
Right.
So. Yeah.
Well, um. You, you can get a light meter and we can set standard, such as the light meter is, but maybe for this product, we could just request that he puts it on the dimmer. And then, um.
You can adjust it.
Yeah.
That's good.
Per somebody's approval, either Javier to yourself or, or, or ourselves.
And, uh, yeah, I think that would be.
But you, you can't get an LED dimmer. Uh, which you can't for the, you know, their neon signs right next to it, uh, those are gonna be probably brighter than this.
It, yeah, the, uh, yeah, the base shop, I do know those are rather like. Which that might be a question we'll talk about later, but, um, I'll bring that up.
So, and I, I'm not so worried that it doesn't have that red. On the face, so probably it's the lights gonna go on the edge.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, i- i- you know, my take on it is. How bright can it be? You know, like, i- i- I would assume. That signs, and maybe the applicant can speak to this, I would assume that. Um, most signs stay within the same. Kind of brightness, because all of those signs are very similar in their design, is that correct?
That, that is correct, we use, uh, the same vendor to make the signs for, you know, all of our clients for the most part. Um, there's nothing that's gonna be too bright about this sign, I can assure you of that. Uh, especially because it's got the faces on it, which tone down the, it's LED lighting. Um, so it's a much more controlled lighting than what they used to use back in the day, like neon or fluorescent tubes and things like that.
Yeah.
And so, you know, loo- looking at some of the other channel letters that are in that shopping center, it, it's very standard.
Okay. Okay, well, um, in that case, would somebody like to make a motion to? Approve or not approve, um, unless anybody else has anything else they'd like to bring up regarding the sign?
I moved to approve the sign permit as stated.
All in favor? Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mister David.
Thank you guys for having me, I appreciate your time, if, if you do run into any other, anything else Javier, just reach out, I'm glad to help.
Of course, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
All right, thank you guys, y'all have a good evening.
You as well.
You too, take care. Okay, so, uh, now we'll move back to old business. Um, with the Dollar General landscaping update.
Yeah, so I have been, just to update, I've been having trouble getting in with the property manager. But looking through Matt's old information, he had a back and forth, our previous town administrator. With the, the owner and the, uh, tenant, which would be the Dollar General. Um, but two weeks ago, they started updating their landscaping plan, putting in new shrubbery. Uh, so I'm gonna follow up and try to confirm that they're following up with all. Of the landscaping requirements, but I do see some momentum.
There were signs of the.
Oh, yeah, this was like two weeks ago or something, guys were.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, approaching fall. So the only thing I could think of is as spring comes in, uh, as your county administrator and as community members. Uh, we'll keep an eye and I'll keep trying to reach out to them. Obfuscating us for a while as we.
Yeah, I, I guess I have a question about this, um. So, we approved a landscape plan that included many. Well, eh, we had a lengthy conversation about including many native plants. Because within our guidelines, we. Um, we recommend that native plants are. Obviously, you know, better for our environment, I. Because we have gone through, I mean, literally, it's been years. Of back and forth with Dollar General and the owner of the building and the owner of the business and. You know, the, um, et cetera, et cetera. And we approved a plan. It does make me feel like. It is no longer about a recommendation, it's more about they need to follow through. With the plan they originally had.
Of course.
And. Eh, so I guess. You know, I mean, of course, there's a large part of me that's like, great, just get something in the ground that makes it look. Not horrible. But at the same time. I, I do feel like we need to hold them to a standard, the way we do with everyone else, um. And so, I, I'm wary of, like. Or I guess I get a little concerned when, when you say they're putting things in the ground and, and. And we don't know what those things are, and so I'd like to hear from you all about. Your thoughts on that.
I'll start, uh, I completely agree, uh, the time for enforcement. Uh, has certainly come, they've had, I mean, it's just been an issue for. Years now, I mean, we've talked about it on council when I was around, so. Yeah, um, I think we've been very. Lenient and assisting and trying to keep a plan in place, but. They're very obviously, and wanted to put the blame game on who's responsible. And then just not do anything about it.
Well, I think we've got other issues with the stories level, not only. Architectural, really board related, I think that. If you monitor the little Facebook, there's been a lot of complaints about it, this is in general, um. I don't think it has to be that way, and I don't think we can, here can do anything about that, but I think it's good to keep your perspective, like. Yeah. But, uh, if I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, let's get something done and then make enforcement kind of the backend of that, like, hey. Glad you're doing it, but we wanna make sure you're still complying with what you said you do. Because if we put our feet down here, there's a good chance that they're gonna go, okay, now we're gonna replan this, it might be months in and. Reasonably, if they have a plan and they're executing that plan, and they go, all right, well, we need another couple of months, we need, you know. More time to do this, and what are we gonna say, no, you know, so, just to play devil's advocate on that.
To not play devil's advocate, though, we were sitting here a year ago and had the exact same conversation. And then twenty nineteen, having the same conversation, so I mean, can they get a, you know, occupancy, um. And, uh, without complying to their approved plan.
So I would suggest, I have found the plan. And I can kind of catalog what's in compliance or not. And then talk with our council about what enforcement devices we kinda have. Um, I can't answer that right now off the top of my head. But what I could do is, I can move faster as staff on that with council and then keep ARB in the loop. Cause I think I also heard one thing, it's if a month passes and I report back. Uh, they might be further.
Oh, yeah.
And that'd be great, and then we would, we would, we wouldn't bother with that conversation if we see more progress than just. The bare minimum for, but. Yeah. Uh, I, I would feel comfortable making a recommendation. From ARB to council, um. Saying we've held our hands back long enough. Would you be willing to express that out?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can bring that to council and then maybe, Aaron, what we can do is you as the chair and myself as, uh. I guess we, we can meet with two people, right?
Definitely.
Okay, so maybe you as chair, me as a council member. Can schedule a meeting with whoever is. That is responsible over there at Dollar General and kinda have them walk us through something, um. That might be, I have seen in the last couple. Months here that, that having an individual rather than going. ARB to council, ARB to council, back and forth, it's been a time, maybe we can just jump on it. And kind of, not necessarily in unofficial capacity, but just head it up and say, hey. This is what we expect, this is what your plan says, and I wanna make sure you're complying with this and just kinda. Get it before they're committed too far, whatever it is that you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great idea, assuming we can talk to a human, because I. I think that has been, mm, Matt, and quite honestly, my. Issue also, I've reached out to them and nobody has responded and it, it. As, uh, Josh said, they keep punting back and forth about who is responsible for this, so. If we're, Javier, if you're able to. Reach somebody who seems responsive. I would, I would be happy to do that, I also think maybe the first. Um, the first step is actually just to take the plan and. You know, in my own time, I'd be happy to just. Compare plants and see if they're following through on the plants that are on the plan. Um, and, and if so, then we don't have to do any of that work.
If I share the plan with you and you help me, uh, assess compliance. I can keep Alex and you in the loop about any act, any discussion that needs to be shared with either council or town council.
Great, that sounds great.
That feels like a working.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll just drive by there and, and, and look at what they planted.
Hmm, okay.
Great, thanks team, I appreciate, um, I appreciate your thoughts on that.
Absolutely.
Um. Letters to historic overlay area residents, this is what, uh, Mister Barker was speaking to actually. And so, um, it's a, it's great timing.
So. Aaron, um, I didn't expect you to not be in person, I found our, I'll share it via email. Uh, I think if I remember our last meeting. We discussed sharing the most recent brochure we had, so I updated this, um. I updated the QR code on it to our new website. Um, I feel comfortable just using this, it's, there's no need to reinvent the wheel with this stuff. Uh, quick glance, it's all the same as it was before. Um, I also found an old letter that we were using to notify annually, um. The, uh, tenant. Residents of the historic district. Uh, it's just a boilerplate page in the historic district, as you said, it kind of touched upon what Mister Brad Barker kinda mentioned. What I could think of, I saw that we were sending them probably in December, right before or right when we're doing our inventory. It seems easy enough to fold this into thirds, fold the brochure into thirds, mail these out in this mid-December. It serves as kind of a heads up, uh. It wouldn't hurt with you guys walking around with clipboards that they have a heads up, I know we live in, uh, Virginia, um. And, um, I've updated it for now, but I, I'd feel more than comfortable in about two months. Uh, sending these out, uh, ahead of time, so we time it perfectly with our discussions about updating our inventory. Um, and.
Great.
And to the point before I forgot, I also found this afternoon the letter we sent to Realtors. Which Brad Barker mentioned, so it's also mail something to Realtors out even now. Uh, just to kind of refresh it again, um, so they're.
Great.
Just having some discussions about, hey, this is stuff you should discuss with, uh. Any prospective buyers in the area, um, I think that would address some or make forward progress towards what. Uh, Brad, uh, discussed with us.
Great, that sounds good.
Roll a question out of left field on the brochures. Yes. Question was, can we have some already that are pre-made? And that won't affect our budget, or is it something that we would be needing to prepare for in future years? I would, I think I would be able to put it under our administrative budgeting. Uh, for, for mailings. Um, if our. If our business license enforcement is easier than it was last year, we'll be able to do it. I think I know the trick to get a little bit, that's really what we spent our mailing off. Um, okay, but, cause, you know, I know we're. I guess we, did we start a new budgeting cycle? Yeah, so I mean, we would have missed the ship this time to include it as requests, but. I would, yeah, I'll just keep that in mind for our future. I think I can find some wiggle room, uh, this is a smaller amount and it does, the first lighter doesn't need to be sent certified. Uh, that's really where you start incurring costs, stamps not really.
Maybe we should look into some grants and some potential federal funding, because this is about as old as it gets. Country, so, I would be curious to see if there's, I mean, even a couple hundred bucks would go a long way. I have no idea how to go about that, but it is something I think worth looking into.
Absolutely.
Alex, are you speaking about the printing itself or the design of it?
That was Josh talking about, uh, the, I'm just talking about in general, if we could get some. Some grants or some federal funding.
My, my budgeting question was just the overall printing and sending out of them.
Got it, okay.
Cause, you know, while it's only one sheet of paper, it's ink distribution.
Right.
Just thinking about everything.
Yeah, good. Great, well, so. I assume, um. You know, uh, Javier, do you want us to vote? On the design of it and, or do you want us to look over it? This month and then give you feedback next month?
No, there's no need, there's no need for action, I kinda wanted to share it with you, just. Just so you have, uh, so you feel informed. And included, the letter quickly glancing at it, it's pretty boilerplate, I just changed names on it.
Great.
You know, and then the flyer, nothing's really changed on it, it's just kind of informative, I think the most important aspect is. Having people aware of us as a board and then having uh clarity on that there's a way of communicating with us.
Great.
Um I just wanted to follow up on that because we had it a few months back and we have a full um TV here right now.
Yeah, great, great. Well, if you all, you can send it to me now and I'll get it. But if you all, I've seen many iterations of this and. Um if it's the most recent one, I'm, I'm fine with it. If you all approve it, then um. I think we can move forward with it.
Uh, yep, I, I'm a happy camper with it. I'm sending you texts of it right now.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And Aaron, I can quickly update on the sidewalk lights.
Great.
Um so I reached out to actually Charlottesville's historicals uh uh staff that work with their BAR, their Board of Architectural Review.
How many different ways can we say it?
Yeah. Um and I talked with them because I, I wanted to work with uh Josh Beck about what you can do about streetlights. I had um. As many comments I had about them being uh uh too bright and not reflecting on historic history. I also had uh uh comments that were approving of them as safety measures. Um what the uh. Staff member over at BAR explained to me is that in most cases, and it corresponds with the discussion. We own the poles, but we don't own the pole tops. We lease out the contract with Appalachian Power for the lights. So the major issue is that they handle the LED lights. Um, I am still searching for the contract, which would be probably old, might be older than me.
Hmm.
Uh knowing what it is.
Yeah.
But he said that the standard usually in Virginia is that written into the contract, they have such control that it would be very difficult to come back. With some kind of enforcement. Um I can investigate into it further, but uh the bright side, um pun not. Is that they're LED, so we should be saving some money at least on that side.
So.
Yeah.
I mentioned this before and I have no clue about. If this is possible with them, but a lot of LEDs have tone adjustment on them and I don't know. That's a possibility to have them just adjust the tone or something.
That is a very good point, Alex.
I don't think that Appalachian would be like. Upset about it.
If that was the. They, they weren't upset, but they clearly through email communicated with them, said that it wasn't possible.
Oh.
It was one of those emails where I, I. I feel like I was running out of ways to ask graciously.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you for following up.
Yeah.
I can follow up on that contract or reach out to other municipalities that can explore anything like this in the future. Uh maybe as an intellectual exercise at this point, but.
I mean, really Javier, how many intellectual exercises do you need on your plate at this point?
Kind of creepy. What if we did the, the globes?
It's, it doesn't even have a glow. It's like.
Just a.
Yeah, like, it's like a fake globe on it. And if I'm, I have to get cozy back up, maybe also glass. Yeah, because the LED is just at the bottom of it and illuminates. There might be like something at the top to like reflect it a little bit.
My last idea, we get a bunch of sunglasses.
Right. Um, I, you know, I hesitate to give you something else on your plate. That's a waste of time.
Yeah.
Um and I kind of feel like this is a little bit of a waste of time for you to be focusing on because. Um. It sounds like you did due diligence and they're not giving us any other options.
It does kind of shoot us in the foot as far as standards. Like if someone has that lighting in their house now and they go, well, you know, you're lucky.
It's all this.
Got it all on the show.
Yeah.
Some different.
Is there a complaint? Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Alright, I had a community member mail in, or email, let's be honest, and about. About.
Right.
Okay, so it's not people in the building that are.
No.
About the light outside the window being too bright.
No, no, I didn't have that. And then I had community members say that they felt safer walking down the street.
Cause usually there are shields, you know, that are.
Hmm.
Except, you know. So you could go on top of them. Either put it on top or on one side or. It might. Directly, I don't know, let's make it soft and overall right.
No, but that was successful with uh our gas station down on East Bay. They did shield it to reduce the open. And that was an example that it was bleeding over the sidewalk into residential homes.
Right.
Uh naturally, there are residential homes here, but I haven't heard anything in the same way that I've heard uh uh the gas station, yeah.
I don't, I mean, I guess I don't really see a way through this.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way as you, Aaron. I, I think we can, you know, we can move on from it.
I mean, I, I do wish there was, but it really feels like they're not giving us any option.
We could all boycott and not pay our bills.
Uh and then the only thing that would be bright on the street were the, the lamps. Um, yeah, I, I, that's, that's what it feels like to me. So if you all. Agree, um we can just move forward.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Thanks for.
Yeah, thank you so much Javier.
Thanks for this.
Yeah, uh the brochure looks great. I think if you all agree, we should just send it.
Yep, yeah.
Great.
Start like an envelope.
Great, thanks for sending those, Josh.
What?
Thank you for sending those to me.
Oh, I was like Javier, the one that just sent it to us.
Um.
Aaron, I included vacancy on the agenda. I think that's the last time, just to update everyone.
Great. So um as you all know, we have a board vacancy. Um Austin had to leave immediately. Um, and so we're looking for new members. Uh Javier and I have spoke about this. Uh outside of our meeting that we would like to be proactive this month about. Um, reaching out to potential members. He has posted the um vacancy on the website and um we also spoke about him posting it. On uh the Facebook page. Um, we're looking for members who reflect the values and standards of the ARB, so. Um, I, I, I don't know. We need at least one community member and I think Alex and Josh, you fulfill that, correct?
Yes, I live right, I live downtown.
Yeah, so I don't think this person needs to live within Scottsville. Um.
Do we make an offer to Brad Barker as he answers?
I think he would be fantastic to have on the team. Um. So if someone could reach out to him, Alex, if you'd like to do that, that would be wonderful.
I'll text them from here.
I have to talk to him.
We love it. That'll work.
And I, great, and I've also uh reached out to Ms. McMahon who lives across the street from the um. Uh from the uh the new Montessori school and she also seems interested. She was recommended by Kevin Quick. Um. And so these people will, once uh we recruit, these people will submit their name. As um as an applicant and then we will um essentially interview them. And um and then we will vote. Um.
Uh.
And that.
Scratch.
Go ahead.
Are we invited to five?
I don't think so, though. That's a good question. Javier, do you know?
Uh no, but I could quickly check the code. And see.
And I would imagine that the code is something that we could have amended through a way of town council vote. Should we?
Cause I think that opens up dialogue a lot more and also help us get quorum a lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we have.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
They have a broader knowledge of this and we all bring different skills to the table and.
Yeah.
I could bring an answer to you guys after the meeting on that. Just double check everything.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Um, so yeah, i- if, if each person could. Kind of rack their brains and think about who they'd like to invite to apply. Uh that'd be appreciated. We would need to do that. By um. Well, what's the best way to do this Javier? Should we, should we have everybody just kind of email you recommendations mid-month? Or should we bring the recommendations next meeting?
Mid-month would be good because I could make more. And then we could use the November uh for discussion. Uh and ARB, since they have the expertise and their feet on the ground. What they would want to do is provide a recommendation uh to town council and of course, it's an appointment by town council. Uh but.
Okay.
That's something that really understand more than me.
Great.
Are a good candidate.
Great. So um. So, alright, I'll reach out to Ms. McMahon. Um Alex, you'll reach out to Ms., Mr. Barker. Um. Josh and John, um do you all have anybody in mind? Who uh you're interested in inviting?
I, I, the name that came to my mind is a guy named Donovan Carvill. He's a contractor. Doing a, he lives, I think, um near Desmond or something. Always not too far away and he's done a lot of uh historic or work on historic homes. And um great musician, really nice guy.
Great, wonderful.
He's super compatible.
Excellent.
If, if you guys are willing to reach out, uh you have my email and I can follow up and collate that together.
Okay.
So. And pass any questions that belong to me. I'll try to answer anything.
Okay, great. Well, I'm excited. I, I love the idea of opening the board up to more people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Less flexibility for the reality of life.
Right, right, exactly. Um, alright, does anybody have anything else they want to add to that topic?
Uh, do you want to hold off until we have? So procedural wise, since we lost our by-share. We do usually want to throw a new by-share in in case you are absent.
Right.
I nominate Josh Beck to be the vice chair of the Architectural Review Board of Scottsville, Virginia. Not bad, yeah.
All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Great, excellent. Josh, you have no say.
That's what she told me last.
Great.
If I was lucky, they'd kick me out. Then I'd be second.
Right. Alright, um. It looks like, are there any property members in, in attendance?
We do not have any at the moment.
None in person and nobody online, Chair.
Okay, in that case, um can I have, if there's nothing else, can I have a move to um adjourn our meeting?
The moved.
So.
On favor?
It's a joint second. I'll give it a thought.
Oh, hi.
Okay. I, I will, I will never do this remotely again. It is very confusing.
But thank you, Aaron.
Yeah.
And I'll follow up with you guys.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Take care, bye.
Alright, James.
Have a good night.